...the city council, which council wanted to have the last council meeting. I think probably, I'm going to just start off with one of the questions I think Terry McLone answered or asked rather than answered, and we can just go from there before we get into the blunt of it. And I guess, Susan, I can ask you, why, what's the purpose and why do we need it?
So, Tom Buford is the one that's been working on this for quite some time, so obviously Tom is here. This has been a draft, what would you say, Tom, three years, four years?
We started a year and a half with the pandemic about four and a half years ago.
So, in addition to some of the items that Tom originally had wanted to address within the ordinance, he has since also been able to talk to Jacob. So Jacob has some concerns as far as, as it relates to trees here in Eureka Springs as well. So they got together, they put together this draft, and that is what sits in front of you at this point. So there are, I mean, obviously it has lots of papers, lots of pages to it, but what would you say, Tom? Would you say this is going to get you where you need to be?
Well, we started about, I'd say, four and a half years ago. We had, we discussed it, I think it, we had eight workshops, public workshops where the public were invited and came to the workshops. We then discussed the input from the people that had appeared at the workshops and incorporated that into the draft of the ordinance. We discussed it, I think, 10 times at the planning commission. It was ready to go to city council about the time the pandemic hit, and I didn't think it would be fair to bring it up at that time because we weren't, the city council wasn't really meeting as they normally do. And then when they started meeting, we had the problem with, you know, everybody had to have masks on, eight feet apart, and then we had to deal with the stage up there and the people in the bottom, you couldn't hear them, you couldn't see them, and so I didn't really bring it up. And when I got ready to bring it up, back in November, we just hired the new building inspector, and of course he came on and he's been very busy. I wanted his input before I brought it before the, before the city council. And I found I ran him down about a month ago, and he and I in a power met, and the only thing that changed really from the time Boza did the meeting, and if you look on page seven of the proposed ordinance, he brought the concern up about trees on private property that were, that were in danger of falling on houses. And I explained that I didn't really want to get too much involved in telling people they had to cut tree, had to cut trees down their property. And he said, well, we need something, and I would have to tell them they had to cut them down, but make them cut them down. And so then we got into what we do about making them cut them down and who's going to pay for it. So we came up basically with the same thing. We incorporated the language out of the sidewalk on it, so we had that says, if the sidewalks in the Stockton district are disrepair, the city can repair the sidewalks and put a charge back against the property. So that language on page seven was added at the.
Are you talking about item one?
Yeah, item two, one and two, going down through number four. One through four at the bottom of page seven and page eight. And that was added at this grid. Now, other than that, basically the ordinance says it was when we started four and a half years ago talking about it. And, basically.
So I guess the question really is, since it's going to come to the city council table, has anybody read it? Like, does it make sense? Does, do you have any questions?
Well, I think there's some, I have. There's some issues on there, but I'll let the council respond.
There's a lot there, but I've read it. It makes sense.
I mean, some of the wording was just changed, so it reads a little bit better, obviously. But of course, there is that section that Tom and Jacob added about trees that are on private property, too. So I guess maybe to, maybe unpack it a little bit, does, does anyone have an issue with that part of it? So the part that Jacob and, and Tom talked about, is any, do any of you have any issues with that as far as a concern that the city should or shouldn't be allowed to, to tell a private homeowner that, hey, look, you're, you've got trees that look like they are damaged, they could possibly fall on somebody's house, they could fall into a street, they could fall on someone if they were walking on a sidewalk. Do, do you have any concerns about that section?
I think it is concerning, definitely, to put our restrictions on personal property, but if it is hanging over a public property or a sidewalk that, you know, any of our tourists or, or residents can walk under, I think it almost needs to be in there. What page was this on? Eight, did you say, or seven?
The majority of it's on seven, on that, on with, on that particular subject, yeah.
So the homeowner would have to pay for the tree to be removed if it's.
Yeah, basically, you could, the tree could be removed, he could, the building inspector caused somebody to remove the tree and then pass that cost on to the homeowner.
The entire cost? The entire cost?
Yeah, yeah.
The tree person?
Uh-huh.
Because I, like Quincy's, in going through this situation, there's a huge tree in front of my house that just died.
Can you talk closer to your mic? Sorry.
Twelve Hillside, a huge tree in front of my house just died. So I'm getting bids to do this, and it's not cheap. So to tell a homeowner, you got two, three trees there that need to be cut down, I mean, you could be talking thousands of dollars.
Well, I think, you know, Jack's position is as code enforcement, you know, he can go in and tell you, you know, your wiring is bad in your house or whatever, and, you know, your house could burn down or whatever, and, and his position, I'm thinking, well, I can tell you to fix that, so.
Yeah.
You know, I can tell you, you know, if a tree's going to fall in your house and endanger you, public safety issue, that, you know, I, I mean.
Jacob really can't go into my house and tell me my wiring's bad.
If anything, he's going to do it on the.
Because that's my private property.
Well, he's, he's doing it on the short and long-term rentals, I guess.
That's different.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's a commercial area, and when they apply for a business license, then that's where that comes up for inspection. And even at that point, he's not looking at the wiring, he's looking more at the fire with your alarms and system like that. He's not going to go in and say, your mechanical equipment's no good, you're going to have to have a new piece of mechanical equipment.
With a little receptacle switch by your, by your, on your vent and all that, you know, he can make that change out because it can cause a shock, you know, if you get water with it or something. He can't just look at some.
I'd just like to advocate for some kind of payment plan or, I just don't want someone that's like, here's a $5,000 bill.
Yeah, one of the arguments.
You know, it's like.
I know one of the arguments I had, or it's not really an argument, was that, I understand what you're saying about private property. We as, or if you are a property owner, you should obviously make sure that your property is well-maintained, right? If you know of a tree that could possibly fall on somebody else's house, that is, that is your responsibility. For the city, if your tree falls on your house, I hope you have insurance because obviously you're going to have to have that repaired. But at the same time, if a tree is hanging over city parking, so a street that has public parking and/or a sidewalk that is public sidewalk, then, you know, I, I, I could see where that can be an issue. Because, you know, we fall into that, if no one says anything, so if you're not warned about it and somebody does get injured, then is the city's fault because they didn't tell anybody, or they didn't, they didn't cite the, the homeowner or the property owner, you know, so it's, it's kind of a balance.
Well, here, too, we looked at one house the other day about a variance, and on the property line was a big tree, and the tree was mainly on the property we weren't looking at, but the limb went up completely over the roof of the house next door.
Right.
And there you get a question, you know, too, well, as the tree dies, you know, you cut the one limb off on the left side, you know, the guy doesn't even own the tree, and the tree's on the other property. So it's, it can be kind of complicated sometimes about even whose tree it is and, and who would be in danger if the tree fell down. And I'd say, I didn't, this was not in my original ordinance, if, if, you know, if the city council doesn't like it, we can take it out, we can modify it. Now, I'd say, I'm not, I don't, you know, I can go either way, I can understand your position about private property, and I can understand it.
And one of the things on variance, using the word variance again, because I read this in our, in our last meeting we had, because it also has a statement in there for hardship. So a variance can be awarded to an individual if the ordinance presides too much hardship on the individual. So that cost you're talking about could come back to the planning as a appeal, and then we could look at a variance for that individual situation.
Well, homeowner's insurance will, will tell you that if Joe Blow's dead tree on his lawn falls over on your house, that's an act of God, that's your problem. So we're kind of protecting our homeowners a little bit, too.
Well, I mean, if you have to cut the tree down, like you say, it's, I don't, insurance probably won't cover that. But if it falls on the house, insurance may cover it, so, you know, it's a kind of KF-22.
And some of the updates are actually due to time that has expired since the last time the ordinance was done. Definitions like drip line, that came a lot in our discussions with new applications because individuals had a different definition of drip line. So now it's in here, and it's not, you know, it's, it's actually in black and white, our definition of what a drip line is.
Butch, did you say that you had a question from Terry?
Oh, yeah, and it kind of goes along, I think, with what Harry and Dave are saying. And now, this is, I'm looking at, thinking of private property. I've got, you know, one tree, it's on one person's property, it's got a limb over, hanging over the fence, and it falls down and hurts the other person's property. I'm not sure we'd need to get into that litigation. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a homeowner's insurance issue, and whether or not that, the building inspector comes along and says, oh, you got to cut that down. We may be inviting ourselves into a lawsuit or interjecting into ourselves with some liability insurance that we don't have any business doing.
Okay, so that's homeowner to homeowner, or property line to property line. What about street to sidewalk?
Well, and I think the street sidewalks is a public safety issue.
Okay.
I think, I think we cover this, the city, we got a definite city tree between the curb and the sidewalk, like in the Stockton district. We cover that by saying, public works, so the city can, can do that.
I think we do that anyway.
Yeah.
Under our existing ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, some of this is, is, is existing. We didn't change everything in the, and we just didn't start from scratch, we just, you know, modified what we had. So, yeah, we, well, I think we changed the definition of what a city tree is, but it's, it's still in there, yeah.
It's true, on zoning, any limb hanging over my property line, I can cut it off, right? It's not, that was the law of Texas. I wasn't sure if it was not, so. Any limb hanging over my property line, I could cut it off. It's.
And that gets into legal issues that I'm, I don't know.
I think that's true.
But it's probably, it makes sense to me, especially if it's a hazard. Now, if you cut off a perfectly good live limb just because you don't like it over your property line, you may end up in a lawsuit with your property line. And I think that's where we don't, we need to be careful with our building inspector or whoever saying, for whatever reason, maybe he sides with the property owner, and then that gets us into that whole issue, too. So, but yeah, I don't know. That's, that's a, I mean, we've had that question, and I think the ultimate, I think the answer to what Harry said, I think it's up to the homeowner's insurance if it does fall.
Now, I had a tree that, it was on my property, though, but it had a limb that was going over my house, and it had grown, and it's still alive, but it was, when the wind blew, it was raking against my.
Jingles.
Jingles, and so I had it cut down, but people should do that on their own, I would think. And if your neighbor's limb is rubbing on your roof, I don't think you're going to have any problem cutting it off.
But I think, too, the common thing is telling your neighbor what's going to happen, that communication.
But that goes back to the liability. So that limb hanging over my, my property line breaks and falls and damages something to my property, is it my responsibility because it hung over my property line?
I think your, your home insurance would take care of it, leave it up to your insurance company.
I'll tell you, we had that happen to us this year. So during that, that snowstorm, that we had that real heavy, heavy snow, so our neighbor had a tree, I mean, it was basically a tree about, or a limb, part of the tree, about this big, just on our roof. But it was the neighbor's tree. So his insurance covered it, so it's, it's a, it's a combination. So we also had to file with our insurance company, it depends on who your insurance company is, but we also had to file, and they had to bring an adjuster out, check our roof and all of that, too. So it could be that both insurance companies pays, not maybe just necessarily one over the other. So it really depends on, on what happens and, and how that insurance company looks at it. So there could be two claims, two different insurance companies, based on whatever damage was done, so. But it sounds like there's a question, there's pretty, some pretty big questions as to whether or not the city has the right to go onto private property and say, you have to cut a tree down. But at the same time, the city does have the right to cut a tree down that's considered a city tree, correct? And would be able to go ahead and take care of that. And is that stated here correctly?
Yeah, that was in.
The original.
But it's kind of, we added some more language to make it clear in the new ordinance, yeah, so it is in there.
Okay.
Defining what a city tree is, yeah.
So Butch, did you say you had a question from Terry?
Do I?
Did you have a question from Terry?
No, that was the original question that the city council meeting was, why do we need it? What's this doing different, preparing different than what we've got in our existing ordinance?
One thing that we, we had in there that didn't, at the time, didn't seem important by now than it is now, we started out, I'd say, four and a half years ago, and we have, in the existing ordinance, it talks vaguely about you can require a homeowner to replant a tree. It doesn't really talk about, you know, how you're going to be ordered, and what conditions will allow you to do that. Well, we have a line that says if you, you know, we have a lot, and you start clearing out trees to go to a house, that there can be required to replant additional trees. That was kind of important back four and a half years ago, but now, if you remember the Angle Street deal down there, where you have a 4200 square foot lot, and the house has taken up two-thirds of the lot, and almost all the trees in the lot, well, I say, oh, more than half the trees in the lot will be cut out when that house is built. Then it becomes more important now as we get lots that are smaller, and we put bigger structures on smaller lots, so more trees have to be removed in order to fit the house and the driveway and the garage and the sidewalks on there. So that became, it was in there before the pandemic, but after the pandemic, and we're now building on lots that we wouldn't have been building on five years ago here because of, you know, we're just running out of space, and we're getting lots that are not very good lots to build on, but people are building on them, and they have that right. But it takes, between excavation and, and cutting, it takes away most of the, most of the trees on the lot in some cases.
I just, I just have a quick question, because I know I'm going to get questions from department heads in the future and all of that fun stuff. On the definition of city tree, it only.
Which page are you on?
Sorry. On the unmarked version, it's page two. It's under definitions, the definition of city tree.
Okay, so city tree is defined as those trees between the sidewalk and city streets?
Yeah, so, so city trees, so, and from my understanding, in some, some areas, that wouldn't be the city's tree necessarily. And then what about the other city trees, like on city property, say, in parks and things like that outside? I just wasn't sure if we needed to add on to that definition or not. I'm just worried with, in the future, having to maintain city trees.
Okay.
Would it be limited, being limited to that definition?
So what, when you say some city trees wouldn't be, wouldn't be defined as city trees, what, can you give an example of that?
So I just meant like, so, city tree is defined as those trees between the sidewalks and city streets. Would that, I don't think that would be the case in the historic district, for example.
That's why it's there, because of the Stockton district. If you, where the sidewalks are in the Stockton district, the sidewalks, as you know, are responsible for the homeowner to maintain. In the past, when we've talked about trying to enforce the sidewalk ordinance, the question come up, well, what about this tree between the curb and the, and the sidewalk? And there, going up Spring Street, you know, there's a lot of trees there. Some of the trees are dying, some of the trees are causing the sidewalks to be pushed up, and it wasn't clear, you know, what was a city tree and what was not a city tree. So clearly, the public works has control of, of a city tree, it's always trying to, if they need to cut it down or they need to trim the, the tree because it's encroaching on the sidewalks, that will find the definitions in there.
Gotcha, okay.
So that would be for the whole city? That wouldn't be just for a specific area?
Probably the whole city, but mainly, so far, the impact has been, what do we do about sidewalks and the trees on Spring Street, which are in the Stockton district, because that's where the trees are older there, and they're getting, reaching there, where they're starting to, you know, die or drop limbs or whatever, and causing problems with the sidewalks.
Well, if I read this definition, I would just, in, in, by me reading it, I'm saying that that's for the entire city of Eureka Springs, not just a specific area. If, if that's what the intent is. I mean, I mean, either that, you're going to have to.
Wherever there's a sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, but most, like I said, the problem that passed occurred on, in the old district because the trees are, but yeah, it can be anywhere, sure.
So, so essentially, on council's end, the city would be taking back ownership of those trees that they currently don't have ownership in, in the HD, in the historic district?
Yeah, basically, the.
And then I just have one more quick question, and then I will skip out.
We already did, we already did to extend.
Okay.
Because if those trees need to be cut or trimmed, then we, we go ahead and take that responsibility.
Okay, so then to her point, is there an ordinance out there that says what Ida is saying, that there are certain areas where the city does have the responsibility or not?
Well, between the curb and the sidewalks.
Okay, so is that.
But I don't know if there's an ordinance or not, I'd have to ask Simon.
Okay, I'm just going to make a note of it that we can check in.
Historically, we've always, we've taken that.
And then, the other part of that question was, what about the other city trees that aren't, that aren't defined by that? Say, a tree in the park, or a tree in the, in a parking lot that we own, or something like that, others, because.
On city-owned property?
Yes, yeah.
Now, we did make an exception here for the, any trees under control of park and recreation. We accepted them from this ordinance because we just didn't feel like we wanted to get involved with the, the park and recreations. They have so many trees with Lake Lebonwood and all, and we just exempted them from this specific ordinance.
And where was that? I missed that.
I think we put it somewhere, I'm trying to find where that is. It's in page five, 7.5, 6.04A. All I did was just pick up the language about park and recreation, which is in the city ordinance, and just stuck it in there.
Okay, and then that, since we're in that section right there, you're looking at permits and things like that, you changed some of the, the fees, correct?
Yes, yes.
Did any, did, does anyone have any questions about the fees that are, that were updated? Nope. Okay.
Sounds reasonable.
I like the dead tree, no fee. That's nice.
Dead tree, no fee?
Yeah, yeah.
It could be a t-shirt.
Well, going back to the private property tree removal, I really feel like that's got to go. I'm just reading through it, you know, more and more, especially paragraph two.
Now, which, which page are you on?
Mine's on seven.
She's talking about the private property, about the tree, private property again, the part that Jacob wanted to add to it.
Back on page seven.
Yeah.
Is there a minimum size?
Yes.
Somewhere in there.
There's a small, I think, some definition for small tree is something for, it's.
I know, I read it. I got to find the page.
But there's a small diameter tree in the definitions on page four.
And I don't think that's changed.
No, that was in, I think it may be in the existing, which is a matter of fact, on that.
Yeah, I thought in the original, on page four, small diameter tree means any living woody, woody perennial plant with a base diameter of four inches. And that, that's just, that's been in place for how long? Whenever the.
Yeah, I think it's existing all the time.
So it's going to cost me $40 to get a permit to remove a tree that's four and a half inches in diameter?
Okay, where are you at, Butch? Are you on the permit?
I'm talking about the permits, yeah.
Okay, so an application accompanied by a fee of $40, shall be submitted to the city building inspector, who shall visit and inspect the site prior to taking any action? Is that where you're at?
Well, one says it's going to cost me $40 for a tree permit.
Okay, however, while a tree removal permit is required for removal of a dead tree, no fee is required. Okay, so dead tree, nothing, an application fee of $40, is that the only place where there's a $40 application?
I believe so.
Yeah. And that was number B under 75604 permit.
That's kind of the way it is now, only it's a $25.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty, plus tax.
I mean, that's something, you know, four and a half or something, we can, you and I can.
Where do you measure that?
We can take down ourselves.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't need a tree cutter to come in and do that. You know, when I'm, if I'm looking at a tree, you know, 12 inches or more or something.
But if it's four and a half inches and it's a dogwood, it's several years old.
Well, that's, that, you know, when you throw that type of tree in there, that's a preferred for the area.
Yeah, yeah. We wouldn't want to just let everybody cut down a four and a half inch dogwood or even a four inch.
No, I'm not arguing about the size, because four and a half inch redwood or dogwood's a good sized tree. Yeah, so they go before, if they wanted to cut one down, they'd go before the planning commission, is that right, for the Boza?
Yes.
I do have a question on, on your tree supporting tree removal.
What page are you on?
What's an aesthetic value?
What page are you on?
As mentioned, I think there's a couple of places that talks about aesthetics. But this one was number seven, under criteria supporting tree removal. And I think I saw it somewhere else, too. And I'm wondering what a, who defines what aesthetics is?
Is that something that was there?
Yeah, that was in one of the ordinances we, we looked at the draft. I think it's, I think that came out of the city of Fayetteville's tree ordinance. I mean, it's, it's probably now the beholder.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, well, it's on, it's also, you say, on number C, on the criteria supporting tree removal, so you won't want to delete that word since.
Well, it seems like that's, it's on page nine, under 75608. Preserve environmentally aesthetic or historic characteristic of the land. I mean, we get into some arguments there, if it's in the eye of the owner.
Architects know what that's, what that means.
Yeah, further. So now it'll become the tree pretty police.
We can do a word search on that and pull it out wherever it appears.
Tom, did you have any other area that was a big concern of yours when you?
Not really, actually, not really, though. Actually, really, the only thing that really changed from the four and a half years ago, when we had, like I said, we had eight workshops. And the only thing we did, when I had, when I had Jacob look at it, like I said, the only thing, you know, he picked up on was the trees, which, again, on private property, which I don't know how it, how it left that, you think, you want that out from your position to be deleted from the ordinance, proposed ordinance?
I think so.
I mean, I guess, if we have four people in the city council that don't like it, I mean, pretty much we just take it out, I mean, I guess.
And where was your question again, I'm sorry, Tom?
On the tree on private property that Jacob wanted in, I mean, Autumn seemed like she had a-
I think just removing the existing house would solve that problem.
Well, and I think that definition that Ida mentioned, city tree, covers you as far as having the response, not responsibility, but the ability to go in and trim a tree. If it looks dangerous, correct?
Right.
And as long as that is, as long as that definition is clear and we don't start saying, I've got a note here to look and see if there's any other ordinances out there that mention a city tree or something like that, but-
Yeah, I don't think we've ever had an issue with removing trees between the street and the sidewalk.
But as long as we know it's for the entire city and not just a specific area, that's good.
I think the problem in the past has been, what I've observed anyway, was when we have talked about fixing the sidewalks, there's a question, well, is a tree there, but it's a city tree, and do we cut the city tree down? Even though it's a live and viable tree, it may be forty feet tall and plant a different kind of tree there, you know, this one. And I mean, that's, and it clearly says a city tree and the city can make that decision, but it, you know-
And we usually always had the tree two priorities. I mean, we're trying to-
You're not close enough to your mic.
Tree City USA. Especially along the Spring Street where we've got all those maples.
Yeah.
Most, and I hate to say it, but we're slowly but slowly, slowly but surely losing a lot of our own sidewalks.
And, of course, it doesn't require because of city tree, but there is a list attached here, is trees that, you know, small, medium and large trees that are native to the area that you could replace those trees with. If you so desired, if you had to cut a tree down, it's a city tree, or you're not required to do so. If you wanted to look at the Penix A, there are some trees that have, that horticulturists in Arkansas, it says, these are good trees, that, you know, grow well in Arkansas, in our zone, and a lot of them are native to the area. And they have someplace you don't want a tree that's very big because of line of sight, coming in or out of driveways or whatever. But it has a list here for trees you could pick, replace them with.
So I have a question. If, if we're defining a city tree as any tree between the sidewalk and a city street, and the city has the ability to go in and cut that tree down, is the city, is the city replacing it with something else? And right now, we're not saying it's replacing with anything. So, in my mind, if, if, if you're cutting a tree down, and I get it, there are gonna be trees that are, that are, that need to be, that need to be cut down because they're dangerous. But it could be that it's buckling up the sidewalk or causing damage or whatever. So, based on that type of tree, you know, maybe a tree that should have never been planted there to begin with, because you knew eventually it was gonna get too big and it would overtake that sidewalk. Is the city, or has the city, based on your experience, ever replaced trees? So they go in, they cut them down, what happens?
We, we replace trees under the Tree City requirements. We replace, I forgot how many trees a year.
Right, so I guess what I'm asking is, it sounds like you do-
We do not cut down a tree and then replant two trees for that tree.
Well, and I wasn't even asking about two trees, I just meant, if we're cutting a tree down, are we replacing it so that the, that the city has a preservation of beautiful trees? Which, of course, makes our town look attractive and will be there for generation after generation. There's nothing out there that says that the city will do this because we've done this. And I would, I mean, I, personally, I think that is something that we should, if we're saying we're a tree city, and we've cut a tree down, well, we'll think of it this way. If you cut fifty trees down and, and you've got Tree City and you've got an amount of money that you have to, you're obligated for, in order to continue on with being a tree city. You have to spend this much in replacing trees or replace this many trees, whatever the rules are. I'm saying that, if I cut fifty trees down and my obligation only allowed me to cut twenty, what I'm saying is, why aren't we just saying, you know what, every time we cut a tree down, we're gonna replace it with a beautiful new tree?
Well, for the city, that would be a good idea, because we're just cutting trees between the sidewalk and the, and the street, and we're gonna have a lot of dying maples and so forth and so-
Eventually, we're gonna have-
It would make sense to just include it here and say, yeah, of course, we cut a tree down, the city cuts a tree down, they're after replant.
Well, we already do.
Like everybody else.
But do you replace-
We do that with the Tree City requirements that we're doing.
But do you replace, so every tree you've cut down, are you saying you replace it with a tree?
At least one tree, if not more. Well, then it wouldn't buy, then, if we include it in the ordinance-
Right, then if we're already doing that, we should put it in the ordinance so that somebody looking at this fifty years from now knows that that was something that was put in the ordinance.
Yes, we have it.
When we're all gone.
Well, what are the rules and regulations for the city to cut down a tree? What are the rules and regulations of the city to cut down the tree? Do they have to turn into the planning commission, just like anyone else?
No.
Why not?
Because we're exempted as a city.
Because they're special.
Well, but what if the, what if the guy in charge is, you know, not a tree hugger?
There's more than one in charge, yeah.
Okay, so it goes through a few people, at least.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, I would like to see it in this ordinance, that we replace, if we cut a tree, we replace a tree. In all circumstances, if it's cut down by the city. Now, if it's on your private property, you can decide what you wanna do. But if it's in that area where the city is cutting down a tree, then we should be replacing it.
Kind of goes back to the same thing. If you're looking at your, people coming in for tree permits to build a new house, then it's up to the planning commission, saying you're cutting down two trees and you need to replace it.
True, but what I'm, at this, I'm just saying, if it's considered a city tree.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Are you saying you all put the same requirements on the city, on the city trees you have on individuals, incorporate that in the same language of the individuals?
Well, I think that's what I'm hearing Susan's-
Okay, fine, I'll tell you.
No, no, I'm saying that if it's a city tree, which means the city is making the determination that that tree needs to come down, then the city will replace the tree that they have cut. As a private property owner, if you cut, and again, this is not a new build, but if you've cut-
I understand, now that, but the parks are exempt from this ordinance.
Correct.
So like Leatherwood, if we're cutting twenty trees down, or whatever needs to be cut.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm still on the city tree-
You're talking about the trees between the street and the sidewalk.
Yes, as it relates to the definition city tree. Which is between the sidewalk and a city street, so.
And who's gonna be responsible for planting it?
Who's gonna be responsible for what?
Planting it.
For planting it?
Well, there's Tree City USA laws.
Well, you've got a crew that cuts it down, I mean-
The trees, but, you know, the people that, that cut trees down don't always, aren't the ones who plant trees.
Does the city supervise it?
We, well, we cut the trees, but I'm saying, I guess it's gonna put the parks into responsibility of planting the tree.
Okay, so is it-
Or public works or something.
It seems to me it would be public works, because-
And I'm not sure, like, one public work.
Okay, so are-
Responsible for planting the tree.
Well, we buy a tree from a nursery and have them come plant it.
Yeah, there's some issues there, I'm not sure about.
Are you gonna go water it? You gonna go out there and water it?
I mean, honestly-
Yeah, there's a lot of issues there.
Well, we can't just say, well, we can say, you guys can say whatever you want, but I think as a, as a responsibility, as a tree city, we should be replanning a tree.
I absolutely agree.
We should be replanning a tree. Now, whether or not that is, you know, in agreement with the property owner that we've planted a tree, will you please make sure it's watered, whatever, whatever? I mean, that's another whole set of rules, but if the city is supervising, then the city-
It all comes into the same thing, Susan.
Okay, so-
If the city, if the city's gonna pay for a new tree to be planted and then it just dies, that's ridiculous.
Okay, so what's your alternative, to just not do it?
I think that's something we're gonna have to talk to parks about.
Parks is letting stuff die every day.
You know, it's an issue with parks.
Maybe a donation to Tree City USA or something like that.
So what is the, if we're gonna go back, if we're gonna mention Tree City USA? There is a, an amount of money that the city sets aside for Tree City USA, correct? Or is obligated to spend per year?
No, we're just obligated, but that obligation is in-kind contributions also.
Okay, so-
Most of ours, it's even cutting a tree. The costs of us cutting trees down go into that determination of the money.
So what is, what do, how much do you have to spend per year? What do they have on their books?
Two dollars a tree.
It's two dollars a tree?
I mean, two dollars, two dollars per population, I think it'd be what, four thousand dollars, I think, year to year.
Two dollars per person?
Two thousand population, two dollars per population.
Probably. And I mean, we just got there, cut a couple of trees and had a three or four thousand dollar cost on that, so.
I think the city uses in-kind, when a tree falls and public works, cut it down and move it up, they use in-kind. They don't actually plant a tree, they just remove a tree or cut a tree up.
Or put a value on it? Okay. Okay, does anybody else have any other questions about anything within the tree ordinance as it's right now?
Well, there was, the other thing I had was, now I don't remember where it was, talking about hiring an arborist.
Where are you at?
I don't remember.
Yeah, I think very, very front of, well, it defines arborist on page two, the definition.
Oh, the tree removal fund.
Oh, well, um, seven-
The arborist is somebody who is licensed.
We have, we have trouble finding, I think, a qualified arborist who's certified by the ASCA, so we kind of broaden that out to equivalent, you know, work-related history or whatever. Because I'm not sure we even have an arborist around who's that.
Well, that was my question, because I don't know of any-
Yeah, I've talked to several people around here who've done tree work, and I've asked them, well, are you an arborist? Well, no, you gotta go to a course and take a course and pay some money and take a test, and it costs three hundred dollars, and I don't wanna do that. But I think we did on the definition, say you could graduate from a school with a degree and you could have a experience-
There is one tree guy in town that, well, when he was at my house, told me he was an arborist. Honeycutt? Honeycutt?
So are you, are you, is your question? Well, let me ask you this, Tom. That information is in the current ordinance, correct?
No, I don't, I don't-
This is all branded?
The definition of arborist is not, I don't believe in the-
Okay, so- Okay, and then there also is a financial mention of a fee to be paid out of the city tree reserve fund, or with such funds that may be approved for out of the city budget. It also discusses a bond, too.
Yeah, I don't, it had, so far, it really doesn't come up a whole lot, but at times, even the building inspector doesn't know if a tree, you know, the age of the tree, when you're trying to decide, you know, how old it is, and is it, you know, an old tree or falls within the definitions. And you need, as an example, we had the tree on, up on, I guess, was it, up there, was it a pecan tree that up there?
Up on Spring Street.
Yeah, and there was a question about, you know, how old that tree was, and finally, somebody had a picture taken in nineteen oh five or something that showed it was, you know, it was obviously over fifty years old. But at times, you can have a cedar tree that grows very slow, and it's not very, the diameter's not very big, but it could be seventy-five years old. At times, somebody needs, you know, somebody said, well, the building inspector said, well, it looks like to me it's an old tree, or it's not an old tree, it is an old tree, and, you know, there's, it doesn't come up very often, but sometimes it's very important to be able to identify, you know, the age of a tree or the condition a tree is in. So it's, I don't think I've seen it come up more than three or four times, but it is important sometime when it does come up.
And it mentions a city tree reserve fund. Do we have that?
Not now.
No. So that would be something that city council would have to remember, that it is in there, so when budget time comes around.
We'll have to add it to the budget.
Yeah, so.
Skipping down to the bond, does that mean for any tree removal, or?
That's, that's only if you have to replant a tree, and you don't, the private property owner, he could plant, and I like to say, if he doesn't water and take care of it, it could die. And if the requirement is to replant a tree, then that would assure that he would take care of the tree. Give him enough time to get established and, um-
On page ten, the tree replacement requirements. So, when the building inspector comes out and says, yeah, you can cut this tree down, but then you have to replace it? Is that when that happens? Or is that automatically required?
Well, if they're, if they're gonna cut trees down on a lot to build a house, there might not be room to plant a tree.
And in my case, this tree was planted in front of my house, between the house and the wall, which is about seven feet. And probably, a big reason why this tree didn't live, because they planted it in a bad place. So would I be expected to plant a tree back there?
No, it's, it, uh, on the criteria for removing a tree, if, uh, it's closer to, if within ten feet of a house, it's, it's grounds for removing the tree. There's a section on, on the tree removal.
That's just, trees out in the yard and- Also, on page twelve, tree service license? I just wanna make that clear, that's for anybody who says, I'm gonna go to my neighbors and, and sell my services as a tree cutter, right?
Uh, yes.
I, if I have a small tree in my yard, I can cut it without hiring a license.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's just so that people around town have to get a license, can't, somebody can't drive Missouri and say, I'm gonna start cutting trees, then you're explaining this is a commercial enterprise.
Just wanna make that clear.
Now, if you've watched any tree cut videos, you better be good at cutting trees.
That, that also brings up, uh, tree service license. It says, "A list of locally licensed tree service businesses and arborists shall be available at City Hall." Is that just referencing business licenses?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't actually have a list that somebody's gonna hand out to somebody and say? They'd actually have to go to the city clerk and say, hey, who do you have, who do you have registered as a tree business?
Well, I think you need to have a business license if you're operating the city limits, if you wanna cut down trees, I think that's what you're referring to.
I was just gonna have a running list going, once this passes, just make a running list, because I can pull whoever has a business license code for tree service or arborist. I can pull it up and have a list ready to go if people want it during City Hall. And I can even, if you guys want to have it for your applications, I can do that as well.
Yeah, I was just thinking that since we've come, we have a planning website as well, and then on the city site, that, that should just probably be one of those lists that are readily available for somebody to print off, right?
Yeah, I can do that. That's, that's easy, easy stuff.
Especially if you had a tornado or something come through, and everybody comes running in there with, you know, tree removal services, whatever, you know, and you don't hear they are. And, yeah, pick up that.
I'm so sorry to bring this up again, I just wanna clarify something. So on permit, so I'm on the unmarked draft ordinance, just the ordinance without the markings. Number four, page number four, permit, section C, says, "An application fee is not required for a small diameter tree nor for a city tree. A city tree does not require a tree removal permit." So, and the definition of city tree is just those between the sidewalk and the street. So if the city has a... Or, and I know Parks doesn't need a permit either, that's put in there, but say Public Works has a tree on their property that they need to cut down, under this section, they would have to come before Boza, just like anyone else. Because you're defining a city tree just as those between the sidewalk and the street. So I don't know if you... If council would wanna add on the city tree definition, or those trees on city property or something like that? Or if you want the city in other... In all the other cases, to have to go before Boza.
I like that, just or city property. Something like that can simply be done, and that would cover all of it at that point.
Excluding Parks.
It's totally up to you guys. I'm just putting those out... I'm putting those scenarios out there because I'd be the one put in the middle of it. So if you wanna add that during the ordinance... During the meeting, when the ordinance... Add it to the ordinance draft on its first or second reading, that might be a good idea to do so.
Does that make sense?
The fees are required now.
Make pardon, Tom?
Said, "An application fee is not required for a small diameter or city tree." You saying you wanna...
I just wants to add... She just wants to add city property excluding Parks to that exclusion.
Well, we already exclude city, well...
Not... So Parks is included, and the... When the definition of city tree here says the trees between the sidewalk and the street, so say...
You could just add or on city property.
Yeah, that's what I was... That's what I was suggesting, was just add on or on city property to cover, like, Public Works property or whatever.
Anybody else have any questions? I guess the next question really is, is do you feel like this is ready to come before city council? Meaning, once we make these changes, is there anything that's not clear? I mean, is there anything that's not clear as far as what we talked about? So I think we talked about taking probably out that section of being able to tell a private property owner that they have to cut a tree down.
Yeah.
But then the city is also responsible, or the city has the ability to go ahead and cut a city tree, which is between the sidewalk and the street, if it looks like it's dangerous, dead, or could cause harm.
Right, without a permit.
So we're good on that. We're okay with the fee. The only other thing is...
Aesthetic.
The aesthetic, the word aesthetic, as it's in there. And then the arborist report, where do we fall on that? On seven, five, six, oh, two, meaning the city tree reserve fund, and...
What is the city arborist? I mean, we got... I mean, we have several people who have been around here for a long time.
I mean, you don't have to go, certified arborist, did? On the definition.
I think one definition of an arborist is somebody who cuts trees.
Well, it says, "Three years' experience in urban forestry, or any equivalent combination of experience or education." So that would... I mean, it could be doing it for ten years, and it would... You would qualify. So I'm just saying that once it goes in as an ordinance, if you voted in, then you do need to address the reserve fund, so...
Well, there's a lot to this, you know, and we'll have three readings, so...
Right, plenty of time.
But I think everything that we talked about today, I think we can come to a consensus on.
What about... I have penalties for if there's a violation... But it's just kind of...
Which page are you on, Autumn?
Twelve of the marked up version, just under penalty.
Page twelve?
Page twelve.
That's... It's in the same ordinance right now, that's not... That hasn't changed.
Okay. Well, I'm just wondering, so if I just hacked down all the trees on my property, I would get paid, charged fifty dollars? You know what I'm saying? That's a little...
Well...
You know, if it was one tree, then fifty dollars would make sense, but if it...
If y'all recall on the parking on Spring Street, it would be between thirty and seventy dollars, and y'all seemed to have a big problem about that, so I didn't, you know, we didn't really put a whole lot of dollar fee in here. It could be raised at your discretion, but...
Are you just wanting it to be defined as per tree, or...
I almost want just more verbiage, yeah. Yeah, because, I mean, it doesn't even really, just guilty of violation shall be fined.
Every tree on their lot over the weekend.
Yeah.
So you're thinking maybe per tree, fifty dollars per tree?
Maybe per tree.
Did you say this came out of our district ordinance?
It may have said that, it...
It underlines...
Yeah, it must not have been, yeah, I mean, it must not be then, no.
Most of the time, at least Tim Weaver used to always say, there's a certain amount, if it's gonna be deemed a misdemeanor, then there's a minimum amount or something.
Is it five hundred?
You know, check with the city attorney or something, and see what we can do on that.
Yeah, you could do up to...
I'd like to see the maximum we could get, I mean, I like to...
Want to keep the trees, exactly.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, whatever we could get.
Maybe get Forrest to look at that section.
We can talk to Forrest.
Yeah, and maybe there's a maximum amount up to, you know, a certain dollar amount or something. Or even a smaller amount for smaller trees, and a bigger, you know, more hefty fine for those bigger trees. You know, because a four-inch tree, if somebody cut that down and there was just one, it would, you know, that would be hard to be fined a thousand dollars. But, you know, if it was a huge tree, I don't know.
If it's a four-inch pot, well, we wanna keep that.
That's true, that's true. That's why, well, that's why the four inch is in there, I think, for sure.
No, the highest amount we could legally do under our ordinance is, you know, I'd be fine with, I mean, as far as I'm concerned.
Going back to this arborist report, I'm on the report now.
You're on page two, seven, five, six, oh, two?
Why isn't that paid by the applicant? Why does the city have to pay for the arborist's report?
Because it's at the request of the Boza.
Zoning guy doesn't feel comfortable with making it...
But if it costs the city a thousand bucks to get somebody to come over, I'm not sure we're gonna get one of our...
Local people.
Local people to do a report.
Sure.
I mean, I don't know. I know they're not... I mean, they'll go and cut a tree, and they'll give you a verbal, but...
In most cases, you know, not a really hard, you know, hard call to tell, you know, you can measure a tree, and the hard problem is, you know, how old it is sometime, you know, and, yeah, I have no problem with it, yeah.
But I mean, you know, you're talking about containing specific information on location, condition, impact on development, recommended actions, mitigation measures. And such fees to be paid out of the city reserve fund, and we may not have any, or the city council's gotta dedicate money to that, because we don't have any built up yet.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
And it's liable to be, if we get somebody to do this, I mean, we're gonna probably have to get them out of Fayetteville. And so, you know, I'm thinking that should be an applicant, if the applicant's gonna have to... If y'all are gonna... If the planning commission's gonna require it to be done, put it on the applicant to get it, as opposed to the city. I mean, that's...
I mean, I'd say so far on Boza, it hadn't come up very much, but, you know, and so I don't think it's... It's not something gonna happen, you know, once a month or something, man, it happened once a year, you know, but, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a close call sometime on a big tree, and you...
Yep.
And it's important to know what, how old it is or whatever.
And we used to have a landscape architect in town, unfortunately, moved away and passed away, so we don't have that luxury anymore.
I don't have anything else, do you?
Okay, so back to the bond. It says that... I would like for it to have a little bit more of a security of how much, too, because it just says vague number, it has no number.
It's seven, five, six, oh, two, it's under arborist report. Says, "Bond means a bond from a surety company authorized to do business in Arkansas. Cash deposit to be held in trust by the city." Uh, let's see. Letter of credit from a financial institution. Is that what you... Is that the...
Well, there was that verbiage, but then there was also... Oh, goodness, it was right after the... I think it's on page eight, let me see here.
That's gonna come out. You talking about the...
Well, let me see here, I'm sorry.
Tree on private property?
I'm having your taste everywhere, and I can't find it myself. Oh, my goodness, page eleven.
Page eleven.
Well, the performance bond, a faithful performance bond maintenance bond or other security bond shall be required to be paid to the city prior to the issuance of the tree removal permit. The bond shall be in the amount of money and for a period of time determined by the board.
That's on page, like, nine or ten.
Eleven.
Eleven on yours, okay. And it's under performance and maintenance bond?
Yeah.
Yes. So I was thinking that, again, be per tree, and it just be a certain dollar amount for... I mean, how do you come up with it? How does the board come up with it? I guess that's my question. Just, I don't want it to be willy-nilly of, oh, this person gets ten.
I can think of one instance, there was a tree up on Alexander Street, that big old dead tree, and the first guy that came in to cut it down tried.
Oh, gosh.
Cut all the little trees down to get to it, and just a couple of cut limbs off and then left. Now, there probably should have been a performance bond on that guy, because it was a year later, I think.
And that's a dead tree, so you wouldn't have a bond to begin with.
I'm wondering if contractors need a bond, though.
We can clean that up.
What are you...
Well, that's a great point. If it is a large tree that is dead, then there's no bond.
Well, if it's a dead tree, it's neither not... We're not even in charge of fee for a dead tree, I mean, if it's dead, it's dead, I mean, it's not, you know. And we don't... Right now, we're not requiring, if the tree just dies, we're not requiring you to replace it with something else right now.
Okay. Okay, okay.
As long as we've got our contractors are bonded and insured, so if the guy comes in to cut the dead tree and it falls on the neighbor's house...
So the list of people that...
If they're required to have a business license...
Yeah.
Didn't say something about having insurance.
If you have a... If you have a business, or the city issues a business license, are they... Is one of the requirements that they have insurance? I mean, that's probably not something that's asked.
So it is for contracting licenses. Let me pull up the code real quick, I have it right here.
So would a tree cutter be considered in that category then?
No. So currently, the occupational license for occupa...
Occupational?
For occupational licenses, business licenses, my office handles the regular business licenses, the building inspector handles the contracting business licenses. The contractors are anyone that has to be basically certified with the state. There is no state certification for tree cutting services. You don't... You're not required by the state to have a bond. So those are technically a business license, and they're not considered a contractor. So at this time, they're not required to have tree cut... Tree and wood services are not required to have a bond.
By state?
By state and by city.
Okay, so is that... So I guess the question is, is, even though it's not required by the state or the city at this time, is that something that the city could require? So if right now, someone who has a tree cutting service is not required by the city or the state to have insurance, is that something that the city could require of that individual prior to them receiving a business license for the city of Eureka Springs?
I would think actually it'd be part of a subcontractor.
I would think they should have a liability.
But what she's saying is, according...
Do you have a license for somebody who cuts trees?
So someone... Right now, tree and wood services are under business licensure, they are not considered a contractor under our current fee schedule.
Are they under that, listed specifically?
Yes.
And you said the state doesn't require it either? So we're following state guidelines when it comes to that category?
I believe so. That would be something to go in detail with Jacob, because that was something, when we... When I came into the office, I was a little confused about, and he was... We were kind of going over that, because there had been people who were licensed as a contractor license before, that should have been a business license, vice versa. So we had, when the business license renewals came up, we had to do some little switcheroo's and all that fun stuff to get everyone in compliance. So that would be something to... That I can find out from Jacob before council to see if that's something, and we'd have to get... If, I know the state doesn't require a bond for tree cutting services, so I'd have to get with legal to see if that's something that we could require on the city level.
Right, that would be the que... I mean, that would be a question.
Bond is different than insurance.
True. Insurance would be good enough.
Yeah, that's what I think, too.
As long as they're insured.
Yeah.
I mean, that big old machine that was on Alexander Street, it actually ruined some of the pavement, it was so heavy, and, you know, that guy should have been held responsible for just the damage he did to the city street.
Yeah, because right now, contractors are required to bring a copy of their state licensure and a surety bond. But tree trimmers are not considered a contractor.
So who's that question go to? Forrest? Who does that question go to, Forrest? Whether or not they should be insured or could be insured on the city level and not on the state level?
I think we can require it to be insured.
I don't see why not.
Yeah, it doesn't matter whether it's a city or state, it's just part of our requirements.
I know, like, Honeycutt, the guy I hired to cut the trees, he showed me his insurance. He showed me he was insured.
So is that...
Anybody that hires somebody that isn't insured is crazy.
You shouldn't need to ask, right? Do you know where you would add that?
You need to want... That's why we're here.
Okay, so under tree service license, what I hear you saying is that you'd like that to be required, but then that also needs to be updated on the city, within the city licensing procedures, right?
I think this is a well-drafted ordinance. I think this is a well-drafted ordinance. It's really nice.
With a hodgepodge of about 10 different cities. In fact, some towns that had 50,000 people there, their tree allowance was, we will hire an arborist, we will make all the decisions for the city. And, you know, didn't really go into detail about applications or anything else, it just, they just had an arborist to, you know, basically, you know, make all the decisions. It was, I think, federal ordinance now is 31 pages long. They've fallen below the 30 percent, 30, 35 to 40 percent canopy, which is average, what every city wants to have. Federal's fallen below the 30 percent now, so they, three or four years ago, passed, I think, a 31-page ordinance to try to, you know, address, which I think they've already modified two or three times, because it was actually too comprehensive, but they've had so much, you know, development in federal now, they're, you know, they've removed a lot of trees.
When's your next city council meeting?
Monday.
Oh, it's Monday. Okay, so we're probably not going to have this completely updated by Monday. So what I'm thinking is, maybe if it could be put on the agenda for the, what day is the next one? 15? Or what is the next?
August 2nd or 4th.
So what date is that, in August?
14th.
The 14th?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the, we have a couple items already on the 14th. One is the B&amp;B Moratorium, and then if we put the tree ordinance, Tom, do you think that'll give you enough time to update this and get to them?
Yeah, I think they were getting with Jacob, I wanted to question about the legal questions, and I think Kyle and I can make those changes, be sure we get them incorporated in there.
Do you have another question?
I did already get the ordinance on Monday night's meeting. I don't mind helping do updates if you need to. I mean, otherwise, they can defer it. I did already present these two drafts to council.
That it will be at the next meeting?
Yeah, I presented those two at the last meeting, and that's when they motioned to do the workshop, so I don't, so Butch Dewey, can they make changes now that I've already presented the draft?
We'll just defer it. Be easier to go ahead and defer it.
But my question is, since we've already presented the draft to council, can we now make changes without a motion at the table?
Oh, sure.
We didn't vote on it.
Well, nothing's been approved yet.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I wanted to double check, we're all procedurally good, but, yeah, I, I can, they can motion to defer it at the table, but if you guys need any help...
We'll just, yeah, we'll just toss this and throw it away and use the legal.
Okay.
Not all of it.
Like to double check.
Okay, so are you okay with that, being on the 14th then, instead of? So it'll be...
I think they may not get a legal opinion on the, on the, what we can do.
Can you, can you, okay, so to get a legal opinion on a couple of these questions, is Tom going to email Kyle, and then Kyle's going to handle it, or is he going to send it directly to Butch, so he can handle it? What do you think?
Tom, what, do you remember, wasn't you writing exactly what we wanted to ask Forrest? Send that to me and I'll get it over to Forrest.
Okay.
Can you just make sure you copy Kyle and Tom on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Forrest won't be here Monday night either.
What, what, what items did you have, Tom, that you need legal? Or do you just want to send Butch an email when you...
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get, yeah, get him, I'll get him emailed to Butch, uh-huh.
Okay, okay, okay.
All right, anything else?
No, thank you all for input.
Everybody's happy.
All right. What do you think, Butch? All right, we'll see what happens and get before the council again.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. For all the work you did on this.
Tom, yes, thank you all.
Really. Been so long, I forgot what I'm doing.
They're kind of like us. I, I was paid.